It's 10 o'clock here. That's the same all the way.
Dr. Smith, it's time to go Lisa to work prayer before we get started.
Dear heavenly Father, we just thank you for today, God, that you just remind us that you are in control and that you control even our citizens of the year, God. We just enjoy the beauty of fall. Lord, I just thank you for the men and women here in this room as they make decisions for our county, God. I just pray that you will be with them and guide them, giving them the knowledge that they need, that things that we do will place you. Lord, I just lift up our first responders, Lord, as they help care for us, care for the people of our community. Dear God, I just thank you for your son, Jesus. Thank you for sending him to take the penalties of our sins, Lord. I just thank you for all that you blessed us with, and I pray for you to continue to be with us and guide us. Help us be good examples, good Christians, to show others that you are the light, Lord. Just thank you again for all you've done for us, especially for your son, Jesus, who died on the cross, and it's in his name I pray. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Mr. Ryan. This morning we had Suzanne Steele, literacy council.
You made.
I read. This morning I've come to talk to you with my hand out, of course, but in our building that we're in now, we don't have any internet access, and I can't do a whole lot without internet. And I could work from home, but if I did that, I would be at home, and I would not be here in town, and I wouldn't be able to go places and meet people and have people come to the office to see what we can offer. So anyway, since we've held our record for several months and we did not pay a salary, we have a little nest egg. We run on a shoestring, I can assure you, but we do have a little nest egg, and I went to AT&amp;T about a hotspot, and that was not going to work out. You know, they haven't heart. And my daddy worked for Bell South for 45 years, but there is no heart there now. And I talked to Jed Carter with Maxak, and Lea, their office runs off Maxak, so they waived the installation fee, and I talked to them in a very basic, no frills package, and it's 40, let's see, I think it's 44 something, $45 a month, and there would be no installation fee, $44.99. And I just wondered if perhaps if the council could cover the cost of the internet until the next budget, could I have $44.99 more so that I could, you know, pay for it? And I think that would wind up to be however much 50 is times 12, which would be $600. And if I could have that, I would sure appreciate it. We're working really hard, y'all. We're trying really hard to get this back up and running. It was established in 1986, but we're in the 21st century, and the needs of the community are different. And we're trying real hard to get some new tutors and find some students, and I have reached out several places. I'm working with Votek now to do a brochure, a nice brochure that we can leave. We have a lot of options, too. We've got like a distribution center that's been very willing to work with us, because they hire a lot of people who might need reading, you know, help. Also, English is a second language. We do a lot with the children, but we don't do much with parents. And I think that any of us who have children or grandchildren have realized with COVID and homeschooling, it's enough to make a spare when you have to, you know, do it. I told somebody, we were talking about it, fussing about a number line, you know, it's a number line, and they were saying, "Who was she describing crying?" And I said, "Imagine this, a 71-year-old grandmother at cotton plant, and she was crying too, because I didn't understand it." But anyway, I would appreciate your consideration on that. We're going to go ahead and pay until I hear from you, but I'm hoping I'll hear from you because my money's going to run out. But anyway, that's really all I had to say.
You're not asking for a whole lot, so you'll look at that.
And I would mention that we really haven't ever gotten any more than from 1986 when y'all started.
And the dollar different now than it was?
No, I know it's not, but I told you I might be a little more. But anyway, no, we've had the same whole lot since 1986, and I have a dollar that's a little older than that, so, you know, and she's high maintenance.
You guys want to take that on the Bible? Now you get the budget, let the...
Is that a little more than that?
Do I get just the fact that AT&amp;T has a car?
Suzanne, Suzanne, come here. We're going to amend the budget. We're going to go ahead and do it, and do it now.
Oh, sweet. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Yes.
You hit a home run, didn't you?
I did a home run. I should have said, "Oh, it's going to be a hundred." No, thank you. Thank you. Thank you. I've been worrying about it.
That way you keep it on that stick.
Yeah.
That's right.
Yeah.
Randy does.
Well, you know, we did fairly well on the little racket that we had for River Fest. We cleared about $400, which to me was a gold mine, you know, so I kept thinking, "Ooh, I can probably see how many months I can get into that." But anyway, thank you. Thank you. Thank you. I appreciate it so much.
All right.
And I'm sure everybody does, and I hope the community will see a quick benefit from this.
Good deal. Good thing.
Thank you. Thank you.
Feel any emotion?
I'll make a motion. Motion to CJ, second to Randy, all in favor. Motion carries. Approval of consent agenda. Approval statement of expenditure to tax office, statement of expenditure to sheriff's office, meal log to jail, claim docket, bold minutes, road department work schedule, solid waste register, medical examiner statement. Send the medical examiner.
You say?
Yeah. I might motion. Motion to Chad.
Thanks.
Second to Randy, all in favor. Motion carries. Approval of lost costs for both constables at $2,500 each.
I'll give that, Brad. Second.
Motion to Randy, second to CJ, all in favor. Motion carries. Approval of contract with Kim Pro for spraying on the roadside, the tree limbs, and here's the contract, the agreement in the roads. It's working.
I'll make a motion.
I'll say.
I like it. I think that. Motion to CJ, second to Chad, all in favor. Motion carries. Authorizing advertising for term bids. This is.
Year.
Really rock and.
Blasted, yeah.
I say. Second to Sam, second to Chad, all in favor. Approval of funding grant agreement for state bond grant sand bill 2971. And also number seven. Want to put those together? Can we get them separate? Okay.
I'll make a motion.
That's for a bridge. All right. You made a motion, Chad.
Yeah.
And then Randy second. All right, number seven is request of project funding, state bonds, state bond grant bill 2971 for the bridge on Camry 81. Motion for Brad.
Second.
Motion to Randy, second to CJ, all in favor. Approval of governor's proclamation concerning Thanksgiving, Christmas, and New Year's. This year, of course, you give Thursday and Friday for Thanksgiving, you give Thursday and Friday for Christmas, and Friday for New Year's Day. Anybody want to see that?
Just Friday on New Year's?
Unless you gotta give them.
Yeah.
Unless you want to.
Unless.
They said you can give them with them.
We need to work. We need to. You lock some time off and get more done.
Don't we have to go first?
I like where that.
We're going first.
Second.
Nothing said I lost it there. Sam made the motion, Chad made the second. All in favor? Motion carries. Approval of election commissioner claim forms.
Make a motion.
Second.
Second. Motion to CJ, second to Randy, all in favor. Motion carries. Approval of circuit clerk payment for services registrar.
I like my.
Second.
My Chad, second to Sam. All in favor? Motion carries. Yeah, always want to hesitate on those up there.
Amen.
I don't understand why they do.
Approval of inventory deletions for road department, sheriff's department.
Want a bit big?
I hope this. Radio. Radio. Probably all radios. Those stuff are walking talkies.
Those are.
I ain't hear of radios?
Yes, sir.
We have a printer here, a laptop.
And from the road department, we have a laptop, and I did put solid waste on there. They have a laptop. They quit working.
Solid waste, something?
Yes.
Make a motion. Motion to CJ.
Second.
Second to Chad, all in favor. Motion carries.
And something like.
Discuss quotes on purchase of two vehicles at sheriff's department and approval for travel to get these vehicles.
They had two that was totaled. I can't remember what the insurance gave on that other one, but I can't remember. I don't have that. Anyway, we found two more back in Chicago. One's a Asian Motors, one's a... I ain't got my glasses. One's a 15, I think, the one's 14.
2014 Ford Explorer, the 2015 Ford Explorer.
71,000 miles on one, 70,000 miles on another. Anyway, the total was a little over $5,000 more than what the insurance would give us. We kept the equipment. We had to make up the difference. We was going to take it out, seize asset fund, make up the difference, and try to get them straight. Radio outfitted when we get here. Taking it out, going to fund to make up the difference. Two pounds. Two deputies go fly out of Memphis, $330. Burn more gas than that near driving up there and back. Don't know yet whether they'll have to get them in tomorrow night or not. Depends on what time they get out of Chicago, go tomorrow, they get them back in here, whatever. They'll have to go bring them down, check them out after they play.
You got a quote from Chicago Auto Flex for 2014 Ford Explorer for $15,200, and a quote from Asia Motors for the same vehicle for $13,500. And then on a 2015 Ford Explorer from Chicago Auto Flex, $17,000, and then one from Asia Motors for $15,500.
I make a motion for approval of bid.
I second.
Motion to CJ, second to Randy, all in favor. Motion carries. Yes, yeah. This is all for points. Did you get travel in there?
I almost thought dribble travel.
Dribble travel.
We did. We did. We did that with the business.
Okay, so it's written down here.
Yeah, I read it, and I was, is that part of the city dribble travel?
CJ makes a motion, Megan makes a motion.
I made a motion.
For a little bit of travel.
Approval of travel.
Randy, you're second in approval of travel. All right.
Be hard to get them without travel.
Be hard.
Read?
Yes, sir.
Did you get that?
Approval of longevity pay increase for Judy Plait from sheriff's department.
Make a motion.
Thanks.
Motion to Chad, second to Randy, all in favor. Motion carries. Approval agreement with Max South for broadband. You got that?
I do. I've read over it. You know, we previously approved doing the broadband. We hadn't approved the agreement yet, so this is the actual agreement. It's on the same terms that New Albany's agreement is with Back South, so we all maintain consistency.
I'll make a motion.
I second.
Motion to CJ, second to Chad, all in favor. Motion carries. Okay, you said you had a couple of items.
I have two more items.
I've got one here, too, that wasn't on there either, that... We need a variance on Underwood property. Some work, so we need them.
Sidewalk.
It's about sidewalks and, y'all know this now.
Yeah, they all.
Yeah, like I'm down the sidewalk, y'all know.
Right. So approve that there be a variance under mobile home ordinance for no sidewalks.
Unless.
Mobile home park.
Unless they say I put more than that.
Okay. Right now, there's acre apiece.
That's right.
The lots are.
But if they say I put.
Yeah. So you can make it so.
I can read. That's right.
Yeah, okay.
You want to lease one acre lots, too, or how do you?
Yeah, make it rather not require.
That's what it's drawn up to be.
I mean, I don't want to do it bad.
The other, takes two of them, it's going to be a little less an acre because you had taken out for that road, which is like three quarters of an acre.
So there's total of 11 spots?
11 spots.
I don't make any, I just say subject.
We're just going to put it's subject to 11 homes only.
Right. Okay. Make a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Motion to Chad, second to Sam, all in favor. Motion carries.
Okay, one thing I have, the first thing I have is the Midwinter Emergency Management Education Conference, November 16 through 18 in Biloxi for Mr. Kurt Plaken. If we will approve payment for that, do you need a manual check? It's just registration and travel expenses.
Motion to approve. Motion to Randy.
Second.
Second to Chad, all in favor. Motion carries.
Second item is chancellor clerk court fees.
Oh, we have to put that on?
Really?
Exactly. You took care, you took care of your psychic, you forgot about your psychic.
No, I did. I did. I tagged up a picture.
Yes, Chad.
You made a motion, Chad.
You mean, you don't learn.
Well, that's crazy.
I make a motion.
Thank you. Check that.
I'll second.
Motion to Chad, second to CJ, all in favor. Motion carries.
Is that it?
That all you have?
That's all I have.
All right. Mr. Jimmy, what's up, Mike? Jimmy, man? Phyllis?
That's how we change our court fees.
Steve? You just joined us, Steve?
Aye. Yes, sir.
I'm good.
Sure.
You good? Everybody good?
Mr. President?
Yes, sir.
I have one question. We had a lady here last month complaining about the garbage bill, and this comes up every now and then. Not every meeting, but a few times a year. I understand why that the property owner is responsible for the bills. I don't see it much any other way you can handle that except to have property owner be ultimately responsible. But how is it that it goes on without collection being made from year after year after year after year after year until it comes to hundreds and hundreds of dollars? How can that happen?
Somehow or another, the title search is being missed. I don't know. I don't know where they're looking, if they need to call Three Rivers to go from there.
Is when, Three Rivers does the invoicing.
Right.
Is the bill again.
Yeah.
Who collects the money?
Well, you pay the bank.
Money comes from the county collector, or either to the bank or directly to the collector. So when the collector sees an item where it's gone to several hundred dollars or whatever, what then happens to, I mean, I have run quite a number of businesses. I run a tiny little business now. If somebody doesn't pay us, then 60 days, I cut off, or I take them to small claims court or whatever it takes to get my money. When it runs that long, you have month after month after month after month, hundreds of dollars piled up. What effort is then made to collect, to see that the accounts receivable are current?
Well, you can't not pick their garbage, yes, sir, but if you do that, they're going to tell it to the road.
I know that. I know that.
You gotta keep picking their garbage.
Whatever is made to collect the money.
The car tag can tell.
For the property owner or for the person. Car tags are held for the property owner.
The car tags he'll start with, you buy a car tag.
But not to the person who may be a renter.
Well, it was just.
That's not paying the bill.
That's the flaw of the issue. Car tag is held for the renter if they've got the garbage bill in their name.
Okay.
Which is not advisable if you're in the renting business. You really need to have the garbage in your name.
Hell, yeah.
But this is a fine case.
Because you don't know if they're paying it or not.
Yeah.
So they could rent for months and months and months and not even care about buying a car tag.
And a lot of people can leave and leave and go get one somewhere else.
So the burden is then really on the property owner. Someone sees that they're paying the money.
That's right. And then it sits there for years. Well, Three Rivers puts sending them a bill if they quit paying. Well, then they just stick it in a pile, and then they've got a part-time girl that goes to try to pay.
And they're trying to clean it up now.
So Three Rivers.
So after so long, Jerry, if they, Three Rivers will bill, and after so long, if that bill is not collected, then it will roll off their system to the back.
Then it's considered an inactive account at that point.
Correct. But then the way their system works is that after so many years, that account rolls back to the top, and then they start sending bills out again, and if they can't find that particular person, then they send it to the landowner.
Current.
The current landowner.
So the AR aging doesn't come back around for a few years.
I understand.
It could be for several years.
It could be, it could be five, six, seven, eight, nine, 10 years.
I understand. It could be like seven years before it comes back up.
Before they quit sending them because stamp each month.
Oh, I can understand that, where you got an inactive account at the point, you can send invoices out.
And then every year, I think they change years. This year, they're going to clean up Union Counties. Next year, it's Pontotaw County. Next year, it's Revolts. That's how it all goes. And it's like the time lapses on it.
And from a searching standpoint, I think the understanding is that if you start, if you're doing a title search, you search the address, not, don't worry about names. Search address, it should come up, but there is.
You can't search by name. They won't let you do that.
But let's just say that there's a dispute about whether or not that has been satisfactory in identifying these links to those particular addresses.
So it seems then that the simplest cure would be for the landowner to be responsible for it, pay it, and collect it every month.
That's right.
That is the best.
And remit the money to the county.
Yes, that's the best way. That's what I tried to tell you.
But they don't always do that, but I mean, that is, you know, you can't make it.
I understand it. Okay, that answers my question.
There's people from years back, when I was with the county, there's accounts that they never paid a garbage fee.
Yeah.
Yep. Oh, we've got some there. But they will some, never paid a dime.
I know it from now.
And the residential is different.
They can't leave garbage outside.
Has a commercial, a new commercial garbage contract recently, and one of the important parts of that contract that I pushed for, because it's a multi-county contract, is that Is that if you're going to provide garbage, the owner of the property should have to approve it. And they sign on that way, they know about it. And right now, the way it works with residential is that the owner of the property doesn't have to approve it. The renter can go and say, we want garbage services. And then they get them, and next thing you know, the owner doesn't even know about it.
Can you have a, a residence in the, in the county, uh, without taking garbage service?
Yes.
Oh, so it's not compulsory?
I think they can, right?
No.
No, they're not, no, no, no. No, that's commercial, I'm sorry.
It's a crime.
Yeah, it's.
Red flags for the fire.
Yeah.
So i- in the case of residential rentals, if the landlord will simply collect the money. And if it's, if he's renting a mobile home space for four hundred dollars a month, he, he, he does it for four hundred and eight dollars a month and remits eight bucks to the, to the collector.
Ten.
That'd be a pretty straightforward bill.
Ten bucks.
Yeah, I think.
Save a lot of trouble.
Run it up and it probably have done, man, never had a problem.
Fairness. That seems pretty.
Thank you.
It's like going back to car tags, that renter may have lived at another address when he bought the car. So when he goes and does his thing, it's not even showing in his.
Yeah.
Not, he got a different address on his car tag.
Right. Thank you.
The whole problem around property.
That's why I got out of the rental property business many years ago.
I was just gonna say, I wouldn't cycle like to a student to be a landlord. It's pretty easy, you collect ten dollars a month from them and pay them.
Yeah.
Or something.
And then fix up, like, turn it up before they leave.
Yeah.
Leave a motion to recess to Monday, November fifteenth. Motion to Randy. Second to Sam, all in favor? Motion carries.